Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of Farmington Hills City Council for Monday, September 11, 2013. We will begin, as we always do, with calling the meeting to order and the Pledge of Allegiance. And will our police chief stand and join us in leading the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief King. Next is the roll call. Mayor Barnett?
Here.
Councilmembers Boloware?
Here.
Bridges?
Here.
Bruce, I will note, is absent. Noel?
Here.
Massey?
Here.
And Newland?
Here.
Next is approval of the agenda. Dr. Massey?
Madam Mayor, I would move approval of the agenda as published.
Second? It's been moved by Dr. Massey, seconded by Councilmember Newland. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. As opposed, passes unanimously. Next item is correspondence. Does anybody have any correspondence? I've been getting a few letters from people who are concerned about the deer, so I just wanted to pass that on. And I don't know who's in charge of that task force now that our assistant city manager has gone on to become the city manager of Groves Point. Mr. Mekchun, do we know?
I absolutely take those issues. Anybody that has a deer complaint can certainly call the city manager's office at 248...
871... 871-2500. Sorry, it's been a long week already.
And they can direct those concerns to me. Brian Farmer in our special services department is taking up the reins on that, no pun intended, until we can find a replacement for that.
Okay, thank you. Next item is the consent agenda. In lieu of the absence of our mayor pro tem tonight, I've asked Councilmember Jackie Boloware to read the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered routine, administrative, or non-controversial by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which event the items may be removed from the consent agenda for consideration.
Okay, thank you. The consent agenda for this evening, items number six through 13. Number six, a recommended adoption of a resolution establishing the 13-mile water, 13-mile road water main payback district, Valley Road to Wellington Drive, and final payback costs with CMR 9-22, 23-105. Number seven, recommended approval of award of contract for the Kimberly subdivision Water Main Replacement Project to Bridge Air Contractor Incorporated in the amount of $5,395... I'm sorry, that's $5,395,162, and that's CMR 9-23-106. Number eight, recommended approval of purchase order for unmanned aerial vehicles, UAVs, to UBT in the amount of $40,786.35, CMR 9-23-107. Number nine, recommended approval of purchase of John Deere tractor and cage for Farmington Hills Golf Club driving range operation with Rebels turf and tractor in the amount of $37,404.40, CMR 9-23-108. Number 10, a recommended approval of purchase of car printers for police department to CDW in the amount of approximately $14,914.50, CMR 9-23-109. Number 11, recommended approval of request for employment under Section 10-01A of the city charter for a concessions attendant. Number 12, recommended approval of city council study session meeting minutes of August 28, 2023. And the last item, number 13, a recommended approval of city council regular session meeting minutes of August 28, 2023.
Okay, is there a motion? Mr. Bridges?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as stated by Councilmember Jackie Boloware.
Okay, so that includes items six through 13?
Yes.
Okay. I'll second. It's been moved by Mr. Bridges, seconded by Ms. Newland, that we approve consent agenda items six through 13. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Councilmembers Newland?
Yes.
Boloware?
Yes.
Massey?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Bridges?
Yes.
And Mayor Barnett? Yes. And that brings us to public questions and comments. Please limit your comments to five minutes or less, and you may speak on anything that is not on the agenda. If you wish to speak to something that is on the agenda, please submit a blue slip, which you will find in that box with the item number contained on it, and we will read you into the record at that time.
Hello. Hello, everyone. My name's Kristen Dunker. My husband Matt and I have lived in Farmington Hills for 13 years, and I just wanted to say that we really are enjoying Farmington Hills. We love the trees and nature in our neighborhood, and we love our neighbors, and we're really glad to be here. First, I wanted to say thank you for the very prompt attention of the Public Works Department. A couple weeks ago, we had a storm, and I called about a tree that had fallen over the road, and they were out within just minutes to clear it, and they even put another fallen tree that was in our yard in the wood chipper for us. So that was very helpful and kind, and we really appreciated it. And I've called on other occasions as well, and they've come out just within the hour to fix whatever needed to be fixed. So they've been wonderful. Second, and the main reason that I'm here tonight is that I wanted to talk about the paving of our road, Bitto Stone Lane, which is currently a gravel road. We had been approved by your council for our paving project on October 25, 2021, and during the past couple years, the anticipation has grown, and we are very eager to see our paving project started. We have been in contact with Karen Mandora and have had really good communication with her. We were able... I spoke with her on the phone on Friday, and some of us neighbors were able to meet with her before the meeting tonight, so I feel like we're more on the same page. But I just wanted to remind the council that we are still here and still really eager to have our road paved. We'll be planning to come back for the planning commission meeting in the spring, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much for the wonderful comments about our staff. We always love to hear about people that make us all look good up here.
Good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, to the city manager, to the city attorney, and all the members of council, and to our city clerk. I just wanted to remind everyone that this coming Thursday, and I know that everyone could not wait for this event to happen, this coming Thursday, our Farmington Hills Police Chief, along with the Southfield Police Chief, Elvin Barron, is doing part two of their Town Hall Study Session series. This one is going to be talking about suicide prevention because we know that September is National Suicide Awareness Month. We've got a great lineup of people to speak, to talk about suicide prevention, treatment options, and other modalities, and we have a study session after that. This is the people's forum. So anyone that's going to be attending this event, I'm going to ask you respectfully, do not come into this event and campaign. We don't want to see any campaign T-shirts, campaign tags, campaign literature. This is for the people, and the only thing that we want to talk about is suicide prevention, treatment options, and other modalities. Our people, and they're getting younger and younger, are falling like dominoes to suicide. And all you have to do is just look at the five jurisdictions that are just here on the flyer, Farmington Hills, Southfield, Oak Park, Wayne County, and Detroit Police. Go to their police blotter or wherever they give you like an event of what has happened, and suicides are just on the rise. We know that 51% of the suicides are using a weapon, so we need to have this dialogue. We want you to come prepared, ready to speak. Our law enforcement and healthcare professionals will be listening. Again, it's this Thursday from 5:30 to 8:30 at The Hawk located at 29995 West 12 Mile Road. And I want to give a shout out to our police chief, Jeff King, and the Southfield Police Chief, Elvin Barron, for coming together to do this collaboration, to discuss all these issues that matter to our community. So thank you, Chief, for that. And thank you, Chief Barron, because I know he watches the meetings.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else? Seeing no one, I'll close the public comment, bring it back to council. Next item is council members' comments and announcements.
I have a brief one.
Sure, go ahead.
Sure. Right before council meeting today, that's a lot of activities, but I live in the Timbercraft subdivision, and there was an opening of a event space called The Banks, and it's such a beautiful space there. And I would ask anyone who's thinking of weddings or whatever to go and really take a look at that particular banquet facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Before we came here tonight, Farmington and the Groves Walker Post again put on a spectacular program for Patriots Day, remembering September 11, 2001, and the Police Officer of the Year, the Firefighter of the Year, and the Public Safety Officer of Farmington of the Year were announced, and it was a great program, and thank you all to our first responders. The plea has been made, and it's been to never forget, and also to remember the kindness that we all showed one another on September 12, and may that also be brought out again as we move forward in dealing with the strife in this country. May we always treat our neighbors as we would like to be treated, and reach out. And if you have an elderly neighbor, check on them to make sure they're okay in these difficult times. And again, thank you to all of our first responders, not just here, but everywhere, and for their dedication to protecting each and every one of their communities that they serve. So thank you again. Next item is...
Can I comment?
Yes.
I want to add to Vicki's comment about the service we just came from. It was absolutely gorgeous. They do... Groves Walker does it every single year, and they honor a firefighter and police from Farmington Hills and a public service also from Farmington. But I think what was different this year, I don't think I've ever noticed before, was the big flag flying with both the Farmington and Farmington Hills, big equipment trucks up there on the big arms, flying together, each had one wing here, one wing over there. That shows how connected we are as a community. It's just, it was absolutely beautiful.
Thank you, Councilmember Newland, and to all those who attended tonight. Next is city manager update.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council, good evening. I just want to remind everybody that the city council meeting that was scheduled for Monday, September...
25th.
25th. It's moved up, so we'll have a council meeting next week, for those that are watching. And that's an important note. Also wanted to make council aware of distribution of our long-awaited new trash carts. The distribution of those carts will begin Monday, this coming Monday, September 18, and will be completed on a rolling basis throughout mid-October. Garbage collection with the new carts will begin on the week of October 9. Homeowners with existing cans may continue to use them to collect additional trash and can place them alongside the new cart for pickup. Bulk items will also be collected as part of the regular weekly pickup in accordance with current guidelines. If anybody needs more information, they can visit the City of Farmington Hills website at www.fhgov.com, or they can call the Division of Public Works during business hours, Monday through Friday, 7:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., 248-871-2850. In addition to that, informational flyers will be sent out regarding the new trash carts by GFL to all residents in the community. Thank you.
I can't believe how exciting that is to me. Yes, Dr. Massey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a question for the city manager. Are these... The new carts, are they going to be picked up, automated as well, so we're going to see the same type of vehicles picking these up as we do with the recycling?
That's correct. It's the same technology that's currently used for the recycled toters. Yes, sir.
Have a question.
Mr. Bridges?
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Mekchun, what's the size of that cart? Do you know?
It's always a quick trick question. They are 96 gallon? 95 gallon, it was off by one gallon. 95 gallon containers. Karen, you want to...
Yeah, and we'll have a sample tomorrow in the lobby of City Hall.
Excellent.
And if people want them changed to a smaller size, they can do that.
We're deploying one size to begin, and we're going to see how that goes for the first six months.
I'm very excited. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Boloware? Regarding the existing ones that we have now at home, are they going to pick those up? Will they pick them up?
So this cart is for garbage? Your recycling cart will remain for recycling purposes?
Okay, all right. Okay. Okay, so there you have it, new carts. Wow. We're on the move. So exciting. Next item on the agenda is new business. Item number two, consideration of approval of a transfer of ownership of a 2022 Class C liquor license with various permits located at 24365 Halsted Road.
Good evening. Hi, good evening, council members, Madam Mayor, City Attorney, Manager. My name is Gus Abrow. I'm the attorney representative for Famous Enterprise LLC. We're here seeking your approval of a transfer of an existing location that's a Class C liquor licensed establishment on Halsted. The address is 24365 Halsted Road. The applicants are here behind me, Mrs. Joe Pedaboini and Mr. Sunell Pantry. Before I pass it on to them to speak, I just want to give you a little update on where we are. This transaction has already been approved by the Michigan Liquor Control. Both applicants have been vetted and approved. We have an approval here, as well as a conditional license that's already been approved. You may know the process. You can request a conditional license. Obviously, the final won't be issued until your approval, and hopefully, you know, we can have that granted. But we have a long-term lease that they've already secured. They have a great relationship with the community. They're local businessmen from Farmington Hills. They're happy to do business in the city of Farmington Hills, and if approved, they plan to continue the restaurant and improve the restaurant. They currently employ 12 people. They have some part-time staff as well. They have some plans to change part of the kitchen, get some new equipment, as well as the seating, the flooring, add some lighting. And they're working with the landlord as well to improve that as well. As part of the approval process, they're required to do a TIPS class, which is training for themselves, where the manager who's here as well, which is a class that seeks to educate based on identifying individuals who are underage, as well as if they've been drinking already and not deserve those individuals. And they, again, have a time period to complete that class, that class is the schedule. The restaurant's been there since 2007 from the previous ownership, and again, they've already purchased the license, but seek your approval. The business is growing, and they plan to, you know, expand in the menu and overall, you know, provide a good product and clean environment for the community. So with that, I'll pass it on to Mr. Pedaboini, who wants to speak a little bit about himself, and then ask some questions if you answer all your questions after.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and the city council members, and the city manager and clerk and attorney. Thank you for the opportunity, and we'd love to expand our business in Farmington also. My profession is in IT, and we have a model in Novi also. I've been a Novi city resident 20-plus years, and I want to be, you know, a lot of opportunity in the Farmington Hills where we can expand and do the good business and give the opportunity for the local employment more and that. So we are seeking the transfer. I really appreciate it, and greatly thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Does the city attorney or city manager have anything to add? I'm assuming that you've received all input and acceptances from the fire department and the police department?
Yeah, that's correct. All of our supplemental objections.
Okay. Dr. Massey?
Oh, I do have a question. And this is... So you're completely changing management. Is that correct? And then, and the reason that I'm about to ask the question that I am is, it's more of a comment and a little bit of a question. I live over in... Near there and have been in there a number of times, but I've had a couple of comments made to me by citizens that have observed some activities going on between certain customers and some staff members that would be considered potentially criminal. So how will you ensure that those activities are going to be... You know, you're going to bring this up, and things are going to be solid, and I just wanted to bring this to your attention because I've heard that under the previous management, this has been sort of ignored and allowed to go on. So are you... You know, what's your philosophy there, and how are you going to prevent it?
Well, first off, I'd like to answer the first part of your question. The management that was prior is no longer involved whatsoever in any aspect of the business, number one. There was... We've heard of many issues as well, similar type of comments from the landlord who did not have a good relationship.
So it's not completely surprising to you, and I'm...
No, it's not surprising. It is surprising when you say the criminal activity as far as the patrons and some employees. You know, obviously, from a legal perspective, you know, I don't... We don't typically get involved in any of those details because I... Honestly, it brought to my attention. I don't know anything of that nature, but I would ask you, kind of like, you know, when that may have occurred, you know? They've recently just taken over. I was just pulling on my file to figure out a date here, but it hasn't been more than, I'd say, a month and a half or so.
No, it was way before that.
To take over.
This has been ongoing for more than a year ago, and then up until a certain point. Then it's kind of quieted down. But I just... I want to see a great restaurant. I want to see a great establishment there, and if you've heard those concerns and you're aware of that, then you'll be on top of them.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, absolutely. And again, I don't want to speak for the prior ownership. I think they took over sometime in June, to be clear.
Yeah, and the last comment I had was prior to that.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Yeah, and that's... Yeah, you want... Yeah, I'm hearing that some of the staff has already been let go, and they're hiring some new staff, and so there is new management, and so there was a short term of... Short-term period of transition, and so that's still an ongoing thing. It's hard to make a complete change until you know you're finally approved and you have all your licenses on the wall. That's kind of why we're here, to seek that final checklist and then get the final license from the state, and they can say, okay, now we're comfortable to make the complete transition, whether it be, you know, interior or management and employees.
Much appreciated. When I saw this come up on our agenda today, I was... I will just be honest with you, I was very pleased to see that there is a transition, but I felt that it was incumbent to say, hey, I've heard this, I want to make sure you're aware, and you obviously already are, so thank you for that.
And to be honest, the introduction of my comments were, I was going to state that, you know, this deal has been a battle, has been, you know, a struggle to get to where we are. I didn't want to go there, but basically it took a long time to hammer on all the details to get where we are, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thanks for the post.
Any other questions? Seeing none, Mr. Bridges?
I have a motion, Madam Mayor. I wanted to note that the... This application was routed to all departments within the city, and they found no objections to the transfer of the liquor license to the... So I want to note that. We hereby... The city council hereby adopts a resolution for approval to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission for the request, Famous Enterprise LLC, for the transfer of ownership of a 2022 Class C liquor license with Sunday Sales AM and PM, Dance Entertainment, Outdoor Service One Area, and Pacific Purpose Permit Food Permit located at 24365 Halsted Road.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Bridges, seconded by Councilmember Massey. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, is this a roll call vote?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmembers Boloware?
Yes.
Massey?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Bridges?
Yes.
Newland?
Yes.
And Mayor Barnett? Yes, and that's a 6-0 vote, and that's one more than you need.
Thank you so much.
So we wish you all the best. Congratulations, and we're looking forward to you growing your business here at Farmington Hills.
Once we're established, then...
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Next item on the agenda is item number three, consideration of approval of appointment to the Water Systems Advisory Council. And you see before you a recommended appointment. Yes, Dr. Massey?
Madam Mayor, I would move the approval of Catherine Dicea to complete an unexpired term that would end now on 1 February 2024 to the Water Systems Advisory Council.
Support. It's been moved by Dr. Massey, seconded by Councilmember Boloware. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nay. Seeing none, that's the 6-0. Thank you very much. Next item is item number four, consideration of adoption of a resolution supporting the application to the U.S. Department of Transportation recommending Communities and Neighborhoods Grant Program, CMR 9-23-104. Hello.
Hello. Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Representatives from several city departments have been meeting to explore the opportunity to leverage some federal infrastructure funds to study the M5 corridor. The city's public services, planning, and economic development departments, along with the city management and transportation planners from our consultant Hubbell, Roth, and Clark, believe this project has merit and should be further explored. The U.S. Department of Transportation has a program called Reconnecting Communities and Neighborhoods. It aims to fund projects that improves access to the daily needs, such as jobs, education, health care, shopping, nature, and recreation. It's intended to foster equitable development and restoration, to reconnect communities by removing and retrofitting or mitigating highways or other transportation facilities that create barriers to community connectivity, mobility, access, or economic development. The M5 corridor, the freeway section, has created a barrier to community connectivity, and the city is interested in investigating potential solutions to help reestablish that connectivity, improve safety and mobility, and support economic development, create an accessible community, and ultimately improve the quality of life for residents and our The program also supports the city's goals. This funding request will allow for a completion of a planning and environmental linkage study known as a PEL, a PEL study, P-E-L, along the M5 corridor. The PEL will evaluate existing accessibility, traffic operations, resident needs, and future improvements the city would like to incorporate along that corridor. There'll be a lot of opportunity for public engagement and outreach. The PEL study will also provide support for acquiring future funding to incorporate any potential improvements along the corridor. It should be noted that both MDOT and the City of Farmington support the application for funding to complete the study. This grant does not obligate the city to complete any construction, however, is required should we opt to pursue federal funding for next steps. A resolution of support from city council is required to apply for the PEL study. A resolution of support from City Council is required to apply for the PEL study. And with me this evening are our city engineer Jim Kubera and transportation planner Sarah Plumer from Hubbell, Roth &amp; Clark. If you have any questions, we can try and answer them.
Councilmember Noel?
Yeah, I have a question. I just want to clarify. So I see a couple of problems with M5. One of them, we get complaints, I'm sure all of us get complaints constantly about M5, Halsted, Grand River, that intersection, constantly being backed up and just it's so hard to access M5 there, which is a really important entrance point onto M5 there to get to 96, 696 and so forth for that west end of town. So that's, that's one issue. Another issue is down kind of M5, Grand River, more toward the east end of town. I always say it's kind of the intersection where Target is because most people know where Target is. That's, it's just an awkward configuration there. So I just want to clarify that the point of this study will be to look at those two intersections and see what can be done to move traffic through there. Especially, you know, as I mentioned, there's a lot of backups at the Halsted, Grand River, M5 interchange. So that will be looked at, right?
Yes, everything's on the table throughout, throughout the whole corridor from 8 Mile all the way to 275.
Great.
How to improve all access for motorists and pedestrians north and south.
Great.
Anyone else?
A question?
Yes, Mr. Bridges?
Yeah, Mr. Mador, have you had any discussion with the court or improvement authority about this application? Any discussion regarding that?
Okay, go ahead.
I've actually been in contact with Tia.
Tia, Christina?
Tia, Christina, with Economic Development Department. And she is actually helping me get some letters of support, one from CARES, some of the property owners in the area, especially near the beginning of M5 at Grand River, at Target. So we are working. She's going to help provide some language for the grant application as well. So, and I will be including a lot of the recent study in the grant narratives.
That'll help buttress your case, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
It's, it's my hope that we can start to reclaim some of that land and do some traffic calming in the area that doesn't totally divide one part of the community from the other, so.
And there's really only one pedestrian crossing throughout that whole length.
It's, it's a mess.
Right.
It's a mess and it, it separates some very valuable land that can't be redeveloped at this point until we get this done. Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make it.
Yes?
Yes, yes, happily. I'll make a motion that the City Council hereby approve the attached resolution supporting the application to the U.S. Department of Transportation Reconnecting Communities and Neighborhoods Grant Program.
Support. Been moved by Councilmember Noel, seconded by Councilmember Boloware. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, passes six-zero. Thank you all for your work on this and we hope to get the grant. Thanks. And that brings us to item number 14, Attorney's Report. Does anybody have any questions?
No.
Great. Did I miss one?
Yep.
Oh, consideration of adoption of a resolution establishing, oh, yeah, I forgot this one. I didn't want to deal with this one tonight. Okay. Consideration of adoption of resolution establishing a moratorium on the issuance of on-premises liquor licenses. I will turn it over to the, to the city clerk briefly.
Yes. So on September 12th of last year, City Council adopted a resolution establishing the moratorium originally on our five on-premise liquor licenses for a period of 90 days. After that time had come to expire, City Council further discussed the issue in December of last year and adopted an amendment to that previous resolution establishing a moratorium for only three of the five and releasing two of our on-premise liquor licenses at that time. And that was for a period of 270 days, which will expire tomorrow. So we're bringing this forth. Again, it was also discussed, a study session of possibly lifting the moratorium earlier. That did not happen. So it will expire tomorrow automatically if nothing is done this evening or if the council wishes to further extend the moratorium. There's a resolution for your consideration. We would just need to fill in a couple of those gaps as to how long the moratorium and whether you would like to extend it for all three of the license, remaining licenses or just a few of those. So doing nothing, it would expire or you can choose to look at the resolution.
Okay, breaking with Robert's rules for a minute, I'll allow some discussion before I ask for a motion. So does anybody have anything that they'd like to, yes, Councilmember Noel?
Yeah, I have a question. Where are, this is for the city manager. We had discussed the possibility that we, as a city, would be entitled to additional liquor licenses through the Corridor Rehabilitation Act, through the Commercial Rehabilitation Act and so forth. Where are we in that? I think there was a lot of unknowns about what all went into the investment numbers in order to qualify and that was going to be researched as to what has to go into the investment and then based on that, how many the city would be able to secure. Do we know where we are on that? Is that work ongoing?
It is. And that was part of, that was part of the discussion we had hoped to have with City Council during the study session. I think the long and the short of it is, in general terms, the liquor licenses that would be available through the redevelopment district are somewhat limited. There were a few that would have been available based on the amount of development that had taken place within that district. A larger discussion, I think, revolves around planning, master plan update and perhaps an additional tax increment finance area where you could have some kind of additional leverage to get more liquor licenses. So again, that was part and parcel of the discussion that we had hoped to have with City Council prior to this. It's unfortunate that we didn't have a chance to do that. So I hope that answers your question. I'm sorry.
Yeah, it, it sounds like it's still a work in progress that we don't exactly know what qualifies as far as investment and we don't exactly know how many we're currently eligible for based on investment that's already been done. Obviously, we don't know what future investment is going to hold for the city yet. But, so it sounds like it's still a work in progress.
It is.
Okay.
Yeah, I was trying to find, I was trying to find Christina's email here on the fly. She's got it done. I just, I can't find it right now.
Do we have?
Yes.
Do we have an anticipated date and we'll have that information about? I think the last time we talked about it, we were trying to get the exact amount of money that's been invested in the city through those programs to base our new liquor licenses on. And I heard you mention that it's slower than we had hoped for. But do we have a date that we can be certain that we'll have that information? Because a lot of redevelopment going on. Got something just recently from the Hunter Square, I think like most of you have, in which they're redeveloping that shopping area. I'm not quite certain what's going to go in it yet, but there's a lot of redevelopment going on in that quarter.
Long Orchard Lake, yes. There's a lot of proposed development. So I did, I did manage to find Tia's information. So what I can share with council is that the amount of investment, real and personal, in the redevelopment district to date is at about, is about $60,707,000. The investment needed per redevelopment district for one liquor license is $50 million. I think we knew that number. So the number of liquor licenses available through the redevelopment district is one. Number of businesses that have used PA 501 of 2006 in the past is one. It's no longer in operation, so it sounds like that liquor license may still be out there. Pam might have a better idea where that may exist or not. Number of quota liquor licenses in Farmington Hills appears to be 56. 53 are being used and three are under moratorium, correct? Yep, that's what we're talking about this evening. Number of liquor licenses in escrows. So we have four, according to Tia, and she lists the businesses here. I don't necessarily know if we want to share that information. And the amount of investment in the CIA, most of the investment was from Beaumont, was around $98 million. So it was a huge investment by, by Beaumont. Licenses will be issued for each of the above, above the $200,000 monetary threshold reached. So that, the CIA district has got many liquor licenses that look like might be available based on the amount of investment that was, that was provided there. So, and then she lists the number of businesses that may be available to use PA 501 in order to achieve a liquor license or get a liquor license and she lists those businesses here as well. So I can absolutely forward that information to City Council.
Dr. Massey?
I actually have a motion.
Okay.
And so prefacing it, well, my motion is going to be to extend the moratorium for another 90 days. And it's based on the fact that the logic behind the initial moratorium is that we only have a limited number of these licenses at any one time. We're undergoing this major master plan update and so we wanted to see what kinds of changes that might come with that. We released two of the five and the, the updates from the city manager just now allow us the, you know, to know that there's some, some other moving parts out there that we don't quite understand yet. And then finally, we can go back at any time and change it. So I'm going to make the motion that right now we just extend it for another 90 days while all of these other pieces are playing out and revisit this at a later time. We could revisit it even earlier should we get the information of want to do that. So that, that is my motion, is to extend the moratorium for 90 days.
Do a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to extend the moratorium for another 90 days by Dr. Massey, seconded by Councilmember Bridges.
Mayor, can I just clarify? Is that for all three licenses remaining?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's for the current iteration.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
One point I want to make is this does not include any liquor license that we qualify for because of economic investment in the city. Does it include those or not? Or separate?
Trying to understand the question.
So we got three liquor licenses that are available.
Yes, those are quota licenses.
Quota licenses. But for the ones that we qualify because of the investment in the city, those are separate licenses, correct?
Well, anybody who purchases a license at this point can come in or if there's a change in ownership, they can ask for a change.
That doesn't include the three though?
Does not include those three, correct?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Yes, Councilmember Noel?
You know, I'm going to vote no and I just want to say why. This is the third time we've discussed this moratorium and we just keep extending it because the master plan is still many months away from being complete. So, you know, I'm going to vote no. I'm satisfied based on the city manager's information tonight that we will have additional liquor licenses available either through the Corridor Improvement Authority or through a redevelopment district. So not only do we have those licenses that could become available, you can always transfer a license in on that separate than a quota license. Obviously, if the license is already here, someone can purchase it. So there are other options out there and I just feel like we keep extending and extending this. Third time we've had this discussion. And, you know, I don't want to send the message that we're, we're closed to business. I want people, business owners out there to understand that, you know, we're not putting a hold on this. There are licenses out there. If they want to come in tomorrow, we want to welcome them in. I don't want to send a signed note for 90 more days and then we'll discuss it in another 90 more days and we'll extend it another 90 for the fourth time. And, and so I just want to send the welcome message that, yep, we've got the licenses. If, if you've got a great business idea out there and you've got the funding, come on in, we're, we're open for more restaurants and bars in Farmington Hills. So I understand the, the thinking, why we have the, why other people may be supporting the moratorium, but I'm, I'm going to vote no. I just, I don't want to have this discussion for the fourth time in 90 days.
Anyone else? Okay, I would like to say something too. I'm going to support the moratorium because there's more questions than there are answers at this moment. And the reason why I'm doing that is if we go with a redevelopment license, the proponent would have to spend, if we got one, would have to spend $20,000 on that license. If we wait and we find out what we develop, what Corridor Improvement Authorities do and if we want to create a new district where the threshold is 20, is $200,000 in investment, those licenses would add to our quota in those areas and they would be, I believe, zero cost to a business who wants to come in. And we still have not changed the laws regarding who can access experimental types of restaurants and bars because right now our authority for issuing a liquor license in this community includes serving food and not just tasting rooms. And I think we need to get much more creative before I release, I'm willing to release those other three licenses. And I think we need a little more study on this. And because of that, I still don't trust the numbers on the redevelopment zone because I know that there was a lot more money. It did not cost, it, it, there was an extreme amount of money that went into developing 12-mile businesses along the Boulevard as well as on Orchard Lake Road, including the repairing of the Orchard Lake Road. And we can include that real property change as part of the amount of money. And I'm not sure whether we're, we're looking at taxable value or actual investment value of those properties. So I still have a lot of questions and so I am going to vote yes. Anybody else? Seeing none, let's call the question. All those in favor of extending the moratorium say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, it passes five to one with one absence. And that brings us to the attorney report. Any questions? Nope. Okay, so now we're moving on to item number 15, which is closed session. Consideration of approval to enter into a closed session to discuss an employee requested review for the city manager. Note, council return to open session immediately following the closed session to take action if needed and to close the meeting. We need a motion.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion that we enter into a closed session to discuss item 14?
15.
15.
15.
Okay, is there, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
This is a roll call vote, roll call vote, to go into a closed session. Yep, Councilmembers Massey?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Bridges?
Yes.
Newland?
Yes.
Boloware?
Yes.
And Mayor Barnett?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will close this session. We will return later on after the closed session to probably adjourn but in case there's any action that needs to be taken. So you know the drill, folks. You can stay, but you can't stay in here. So thank you all very much who have stayed through the entire break and we love them. It's always great to see you guys. I should call you guys up to make the motion to adjourn, but I can't, so. Yes, Dr. Massey?
I would move adjournment.
Support. It's been moved by Dr. Massey, seconded by Councilmember Noel. From the audience, do you agree? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes unanimously, including two non-counted votes in the audience. Good night, Farmington Hills.